Is it just you, Manley and I?
Wait a minute.
Hello there.
Hi. David, can you hear us?
I can hear you very, very well.
It's still echoing though. Where do I need to sit for it to see me?
I can see a little, I think I can see with the very top of the screen.
Where do I need to?
If you want to come closer, you can. That's up to you.
If he sat at that table just to the right of you.
Oh.
Manley would be highly visible there.
I don't need to be highly visible, just visible.
Well, come on, we want to see your face. So when you have things in front of you, we can see the shock or awe. There you go. All right, Hershey's here. Let's get the party started. Party of two.
Very funny. Hey, Amy, how are you feeling?
I'm back. So I feel okay. I'm doing okay. Tired today. It was a long day, but it's, I knew it was gonna be. I was waiting for it to be. You know.
We're happy. We're glad to hear that.
Do you have the COVID?
I did. Yeah, I got the COVID.
How long ago?
At the cooties, as my husband would say. Um, let's see, it was around like day seventeen.
I got a mobile.
Oh, no. I tested negative for four days in a row.
I'm just kidding.
I wasted all of our at-home tests taking to make sure they were negative. I might officially got one too, but I didn't have any symptoms.
Oh, really? How did you know you had it?
Well, I'll be honest, I did feel a little crappy. Like I just felt worn down, but I was home from being away from work and everything from the hospital, so, but no.
Is someone coming now? I don't know if it's.
There's a meeting upstairs too.
Oh, I see.
Did you guys get the email with all of the minutes?
Yes, thank you.
Grab her to get caught up.
Yeah, my sister had her, her shot. She had a Johnson and Johnson and she was sick as a dog and thank God she'd visited my mom on the way back from her daughter's graduation from university. And my mom didn't get anything. My sister wore a mask the whole time she was there and she slept, but it was like, she said it was just horrible. I'm getting my booster on Friday.
There's a shortage apparently in this area. Nobody can get booster shots like for another four weeks or something, four or five weeks.
I got mine at the town. The town had a ten to one at the fire department on Monday. So, but they ran out. I think I got there at noon and I got some of the last Moderna doses I know. So they might, I think they ended up with more Pfizer got delivered.
We, we had a lot of dying from the shot.
From the booster?
From the booster and the regular shot.
That's not true, Manny. That's not true. People are not dying from the shots. No one is dying from this. I don't know where you get your information, but no one is dying from the boosters.
Let me speak and I'll tell you. My friend down at Mick's garage, he died from it.
Okay, so, so one guy, you know, and how do you know he died from the booster?
As his family said, it was right thereafter.
But there are people who have multiple other health issues who get shots and actually die as well.
Okay, guys, let's, let's, let's not go there. Is my, is my microphone working okay tonight?
Yes, it is.
All right. I reset it last night. Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes if I start having like echoey problems, if I take my camera off, um, I get a much better clear, a much clearer picture. Yeah, I mean, a much clearer sound, excuse me.
There's Betsy. There's Greg. God, full house.
All right.
Hello. Thanks.
Yeah, it's actually six thirty-one, isn't it? No, well, got different clocks here, different times. So.
I think we're good.
We got, actually, we got everybody here that's gonna be here, so I'll, I'll say it's six thirty. And we'll open the meeting. Uh, this is gonna be quick, I think. We got not a tremendous amount to do. Um, this is the December first, two thousand twenty-one meeting on the South Burke Planning Board. Um, we're going to check the role before we go too farther. And then we'll formally welcome Greg after that. So, uh, when I call your name, either say hello or raise your hand. Hershey? Okay, Barbara, Betsy?
Hi, hello.
I, I know Manny's there someplace.
I'm ready.
I see your hand and then there's Greg, okay?
There we go.
Great, okay, excellent. Great. Um, I'm gonna jump ahead here first, just to, uh, welcome Greg Zinser to the board. Uh, he is, he had it, did his first thing last night, actually, for the joint town council workshop and planning board workshop. Um, Greg, uh, uh, joins us. He's a, he's been in South Burke for what, eight or nine years now, Greg?
Yeah, about, yeah, about that, yeah.
Yeah, and he's, he's the, uh, York County Administrator.
Yeah.
Prior to that, he was a town manager in Dammer Scotta, so he's got a lot of municipal experience, which is gonna be very valuable. So welcome Greg and glad you're, took the interest and glad you're with us. So.
Happy to be here. Happy to help.
Good, good. Um, so let's, uh, let's go to the, uh, uh, minutes of the previous meetings first. Uh, um, Amy got them out. Uh, let's look at the October twentieth minutes. And, uh, that was where we were dealing with some of the zoning issues, ordinance issues, and we had, uh, the sort of the sketch plan presentation of that project off of Wistrot. Anybody have any comments or additions or modifications to that?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I move we accept the minutes.
Okay. So moved by Hershey, seconded by Betsy. Uh, and so all in favor and actually everybody but Manny wasn't there. So, uh, favorite of unanimous amongst those that were there. Jeff, of course, was on, off the, uh, on the board at that time too. So, all right, so that's done. Let's look at the, uh, minutes of the, oops, wrong one.
Hey, Bill, can you just make record that I'm just gonna abstain for both of these votes because I obviously wasn't.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah. I, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. I'll make sure that's part of it. Yeah, because, uh, Greg obviously was not around for those minutes, so he won't be, uh, he won't be voting on it. Um, so we have three positive votes of, of the board members that are present, so that'll, that'll take care of it. Uh, next one is the, uh, November third meeting. And that's where we heard from, uh, the, uh, transmission on Amy's lane, uh, the O'Neill property, and we did some more work on the ordinances and we moved them along that night, actually. So, anybody have any comments or additions to those minutes?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'll take a motion to accept.
I move we accept the minutes.
I second.
Accepted by, uh, moved by Betsy, uh, seconded by Hershey. And, uh, so all in favor of accepting the minutes, raise your hand. You got one, two, Manley with Greg standing. Good. Thank you. Okay. Is there, uh, we don't have any, uh, uh, case business tonight. We have some things to discuss, but there's no cases in front of us. Uh, is there anybody in the audience that, what wishes to to talk to something that's not on the agenda? Hearing none? Okay. Um, so, uh, we, uh, we did, there was a meeting of, uh, the joint meeting of the, uh, town council, the planning board last night, uh, to discuss the licensing of, um, medical marijuana registered caregivers. And there was a draft ordinance that is gonna take a lot of work, but we talked about it a fair amount. Everybody participated. I'll just encapsulate it very briefly, uh, from my perspective, and Hershey or Greg can jump in. Um, the, there's two, two parts of it. The bigger part, my view, is the administrative piece that establishes a licensing program, uh, for, um, medical marijuana registered caregivers. And as you might recall from last summer in the fall, when we did went through the ordinance stuff, we, um, we recommended as a board that they establish a licensing procedure which will allow it, allow the town to have a direct relationship with each of the medical marijuana registered caregivers. Right now, there isn't any, uh, no direct relationship and gives the town a relationship with them, gives the town the ability to, uh, um, regulate them, uh, and to be sure that they're operating within the, the law and so forth. And have the ability to deal with it if they feel that there's not. So that's the first part. And that's the, the biggest part that I, I, I felt was necessary. My personal view is no one's terribly concerned with people that are doing it and staying within the rules. All that's, that's not a huge concern to most people. Um, the concern for some is that there are people who attest the boundaries of what's allowed and test the scope and so forth. So this, this, this allows the town in those instances, the ability to engage those parties and have a, have a, uh, a consequence to that, which right now there's not. So that, that's, uh, that's basically the, the, the point of the licensing as I, as I have it. I don't know, Hershey or Greg, if you have anything to add to that?
No, I, I think you summed it up. I think licensing gives the town a certain amount of control to basically pull licenses when people step over the bounds. And I think that's a really good thing to have in place. I'm good, I'm good with that.
And then, and then if, if someone doesn't apply for a license, but then it's found that they're doing it, then the town can engage them and say, well, you need a license. It gives another way, way to, to deal with them. And right now, there's, there's a, there's, uh, real or perceived situations where the town has a hard time engaging these things. And so that'll deal with that. The part that's gonna be coming back to planning board, uh, where they are likely to have the license in, in an administrative section of the town code and then require that the, um, uh, licensed medical marijuana registered caregivers register as a, as home occupations under the planning board zoning, uh, one forty. And so we'll be asked to, um, establish very simple performance standards under the home occupation piece, I think. And so they'll be, sorry?
So I, I, I got the impression there was some disagreement on the town council about even the need for that. I mean, John James said, you know, but you go ahead, keep going.
We'll find, we'll find out. No.
Okay.
I think the idea was that they needed some, uh, some, some performance standards to go along with it. And the Greg actually, um, strongly suggested that they go to the home occupation piece of our existing ordinance and look at that. It'd be a nice nifty way to deal with that and not, not create a new zoning classification. Um, David's involved, David Galbraith's involved. He's, uh, he's been reviewing the draft and they'll, my suspicion is there'll be a revised draft, which is more specific to the, the discussion last night, which was a good discussion. It was quite substantive. And I don't know if that's gonna happen, uh, before the, in the, in the next meeting of them, or it might be early in January, but they're gonna move this along. So we will get it. We'll, we'll probably get a charge to deal with not so much the administrative part of the licensure, which we've been, um, trying to avoid. We, we've offered input to that, but we don't believe that's to be a, a planning board function per se, but the performance standards under the, under the, uh, home occupation or some, some other piece of one forty is what we're gonna be asked to, to look at and they'll, they'll focus that for us. So that'll, that'll be a piece coming up. So.
Could you, could you clarify for me what the, uh, what adding the home occupancy does?
Well, it provides, well, it's the, the existing chapter one forty has a section under for home occupations, minor and major home occupations. And the idea that if, uh, if, uh, someone was doing a medical marijuana registered caregiver business and is registered, that, that is a home occupation.
Right. So we already have a definition in the ordinance that defines, what are the two different ones? A home occupation and a major home?
There's a minor and a major.
A minor and a major. And it just has to do with people who are operating businesses out of their home. And there are only very few pieces to what is expected. And actually, if we take a look at it, I, I'd love to talk about, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna look at it anyway, I'd love to talk about some of the other problems we have in town that are blight issues that might be better served by looking at the whole ordinance, this piece of it.
Right.
Vitality and not just the marijuana issue. So.
The idea, the reason the home, the reason the home occupation, uh, model is, is, is being talked about is it, it already contemplates doing business in what is otherwise not a commercial area of town, residential area. So there's already talked about, you know, traffic, light signs. You know, running a business out of a home and, and making sure that it's, uh, it's appropriate for the neighborhood. So we start there and.
So then, so that, so that could kind of help to fix the problem out on a gunquit road?
Well, I, I, I'll just say, I think the licensing part is, is more, I think more than anything we can do, I think the licensing part will say you must comply with this, this and this. And, and that will give the town the right to revoke a license and shut down people who are not compliant.
Or require a license where, where there is none now. Right. And, uh, okay, now one of the, one of the nuances of this thing is that, uh, there's no, the town has no ability, I guess, to get a list of registered caregivers. That's a, that's, that's not a public list. And so when we put the licensing in place, uh, it's in essence a voluntary thing. People have to come say, yeah, I'm one of these guys and I want a license. So there's no, there's no way to go back, uh, uh, and, and look at a checklist of people who are, are registered caregivers because that list is not a public list.
On the other hand, not to, I mean, not to personalize this too much or hash it out too much, but, um, you know, it seems like part of the issues out on a gunquit road have been an enforcement issue. And so we need to deal with the fact that enforcement has to be better because enforcement could have dealt with this issue before it became a problem and that's where it failed. And that's partly why we have this problem. So creating licensure or other, you know, parts of the zoning ordinance are only as good as the enforcement piece.
But it, it allows a very undisputable enforcement potential. That's the thing.
Yeah.
We're doing it this way. And go ahead.
I'm highly in favor of getting a home occupation also and put some teeth into it. Um, and as far as the people that don't come forward, I think we can say that should they have to be cited, that they, their ability to, uh, have a, uh, this license will not be there. Uh, there's a lot of teeth that we can, uh, put into this thing and make it so people follow the rules and make it so the neighbors can, um, live peacefully beside each other and not have to smell this.
Right. And, and then, I know, not to, not to, to single out a particular site in town such as we're talking, but there are other, there's, there's a lot of talk about who might do what, where. And if someone starts a business, doesn't get licensed, and it's, it's obviously the running a business out of, out of their home, a marijuana business, that, that then you have a reasonable, uh, uh, reason to, to say, okay, wait, you're, you're running a business. Where's your license? And then you, then it plays out from there. So, um, it, it has a lot of work to do, but I think it's a real good start.
Can I have my two cents, Bill?
Please.
Uh, so to answer Betsy's question, I, Betsy, I really don't know what that's gonna do for a gunquit road. I, I hope it helps, but I don't know. That's really beyond the scope of the planning board as far as I'm concerned. There's nothing we can do. And I agree with you, Hershey. It is an enforcement issue. But I think there is a couple of things and, and I think the charge, whatever that may be, based on what I heard last night, you know, why would we, the question would be, there was a lot of conversation, and frankly, I was one of them, about registering or having the registered caregivers, uh, be classified as a home occupation. One, the, the, I don't think it's gonna be as difficult as we all think because again, the majority of the performance standards are there.
Right.
We're gonna have to modify him for, you know, maybe more restrictive odor control or something to that effect. And the potential environmental jacks and what's the likelihood of three-phase power or whatever going into a residential area that, I think there's a lot of, of hangups there. I, I think frankly, from my perspective, we'll probably have more of a lively debate on, uh, how we define registered caregivers. Uh, we started to get into that last night. And again, my perspective as to why we would want to is right now in a residential zone based on our current ordinances, I'm not, put aside, you know, uh, uh, fixing the cultivation piece, which Hershey had mentioned last night. Putting that aside for just purposes of this conversation is the registered caregivers can essentially form a, a family unit, can form collectives in a residential zone with really no reg, no local regulation. And so next door to you or to me. And so next door to you or to me, a registered caregiver can build what could amount to a very large building uh with very limited or no regulation. And there's no no mechanism that a a neighbor would have to complain or say, hey, this isn't right. You're you're operating what amounts to a a semi-industrial use over here. And and as a a a neighbor, there's nothing you can do. So that's the value in saying, hey, a registered caregiver will be registered or classified as a home occupation. One, it's less work than us, because a lot of the standards are already there. And again, I think the harder thing that we're going to have to do is going to be defining the registered caregiver. Because we're going to have to talk about uh, you know, size limitations or number of people that are allowed. And and those are that that's going to be the tough part. You you that we're going to have to work our way through. So but I don't really see it as being that big of an issue um or or this huge massive undertaking. I think it'll it'll probably be pretty straightforward.
Yeah, because we're we're not, we don't have to, if we go the the home occupation route, we don't have to create this thing out of out of whole cloth. There, yeah, so. Does that address your your question, Betsy?
Yes, but it it sounds like any more discussion can happen when it's.
Oh, it's good. Yeah, there'll be a lot more.
Yeah.
Manly, I thought you said something.
I started to say something. Uh I think what it all comes down to is making sure that uh we protect protect the uh neighbors. Because um if you have a situation where the smell is very strong or the negative things that can impact the neighbors by tens of thousands of dollars and devalue when their house. Because if someone doesn't like this, their option is to go ahead and sell their house. But when they go ahead and sell their house, does a real estate agent have to uh disclose the reason they're selling is because of the uh smell next door?
Yeah, yeah, that that's all. Those are all issues for sure. And we'll we'll get to them, so. David, I think I interrupted you.
No, I I was just gonna say that I did uh look at the home occupation ordinance and and the ordinance in general. And I think one of the things that um I agree with Greg. The 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 tough thing is making sure that we've got the definitions, because I would suggest a couple of definitions. One of the actual use itself, the sort of the home caregiver, as it were. But also, there isn't really definitions for what qualifies as a major and a minor. There's a home occupation uh definition. But in the ordinance, it refers back to the actual home occupation ordinance. So there's not actually a description. So I think that in if when this we start getting into this, that we'd want to put three different uh three new definitions on there. Um the home occupation ordinance, I think, is fairly easy. Um, I mean, it really comes down to um it's three people, which that was sort of already uh agreed to by the council when they adopted the um the industrial ordinance, if you recall, it was going to be anybody, three or more. And they adopted that. So we need to figure out home occupations under that three or three up to three, I should say. And that's how we've gotten into this, because then you go, well, geez, what if each person can each grow five hundred square feet? That's fifteen hundred square feet. That's bigger than a lot of single-family homes.
Well, okay, but you know, that's like the size of a small barn. I mean,
Yeah.
That's not, you know, that's not, you know, or one hoop hat, one medium-sized hoop house. It's not, you know, we're not talking industrials. This is not, you know.
No, I just
Small business.
I just think that the definition needs to make sure it's it's making sure that they're uh it's their full-time home, that it doesn't have employees coming to it, uh things like that. Um I'm working in a different town. Guy wants to do a home uh medical marijuana store, let's call it. And all of a sudden, he said he's going to have nineteen employees. I'm like, you know, that's, you know, that's not a home occupation kind of thing. You're running that, you're trying to get a retail store, really, even if it's people with cards, which apparently are ridiculously easy to get. So I mean, it's really trying to limit the smell, limit the traffic, and making sure it's not a lot of outside people coming to work there. I mean,
Can I?
I mean,
Go ahead, Betty.
I was I was just gonna say, well, fir- first of all, now we're getting into cultivation. We were just talking about medical marijuana stores, correct? Talking about cultivation right now.
No, we're talking about registered caregivers. Registered caregivers can grow. And 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 if we have three, three or more, then we dealt with that with the cultivation.
Oh, yeah.
They they're still allowed, they still will cultivate and process
Right.
Uh as registered caregiver.
So can I? Oh, hang on, hang on, hang on. So I was just gonna say, say was I really like the idea of adding space. So saying that, you know, say we say we were to keep it at, we were to keep it at three people, while you also have to have, you know, a thousand feet from somebody else's property line. So just making sure like, I, when people have a lot of property, you know, saying, okay, well, you know, I get fifteen hundred square feet on thirty acres, but you just can't have it within a thousand feet on a of another person. That makes sense. That's just what my two cents. I couldn't make it last night.
Now, there'll be plenty of time to keep going on this, Hershey.
I I just wanna, I wanna ask um David, when he works in this, uh if he would also keep in mind the home occupation on Lord's Lane, where someone is running an illegal garage there, because it'd be great to kill two birds with one stone. Um it's this ongoing issue. I don't really know why he hasn't been told to clean up his property and stop running a business out of there. But a lot of neighbors, one guy wants to sell his house and can't, he said, and everyone's very upset about it. So if we're not going to get a blight ordinance, maybe we can also, you know, think about what that looks like at the moment.
Is is he not, was he a legal mind conforming use, just to real quick, as he?
He he bought the house and he basically has, you know, over seven cars there at any given time, ATVs, machinery everywhere.
Well, that could qualify as a junkyard, so.
Well, he doesn't qualify as a junkyard, because they come and go constantly. And when when people complain to Perry and Joe, Perry was over there writing down license plates all the time, and the guy claims they're all registered to him, which wasn't true. And I did, I go by there all the time, and people are there at eleven o'clock at night and midnight, and you know, there's other rumors, but let's not get into those. Let's just say it's a blight. Get fixed.
Does he have a home home occupation?
I I I, Joe tried to argue it was, but when I looked at the ordinance, I didn't think it qualified as one, because he's basically running a commercial business that is beyond the scope, I thought, of what a home occupation is.
Does he have a permit for home occupation?
No, I don't think there is any permit for home occupation. It'd be like me running a consulting business out of my house. I don't have a permit. There's no licensure or permit for that. So we can, because why if we're looking at this now, it would be good to sort of like fix some of those problems as well. It and it's all about being good neighbors, right? It's all about the compromises we make and trying to live together.
Uh for a number, I I I can't remember the last time we dealt with home occupation. So this would be a good op- opportunity to get up to speed on all that stuff in the context of this and perhaps a broader context, so. Okay. Let's talk about.
Yeah, I think Stay until we're done with this, Bill. That's all I'm saying. You have to stay until we're done with this, though.
I don't think so. It's gonna take a while.
No. Fine.
So
as a starting point, then, do you, I I mean, do you, what what I what I took at the town council is we got the original document. I was asked to take a look at it. I sort of did a red line, I think, right now. Probably Bill and Hershey are the only two who have that. Um I said that after the meeting last night, Bill, I said that before. Um but a lot of the comments are sort of uh really belong in the in the standards in here. So shall I start with that? Start putting that in?
I I uh you you could, you know, play out uh beyond my influence, but I I'd almost wait and let the town, they were got Mallory was going to deal with the administrative part of the licensing, and they were going to develop a charge for the zoning piece. That's what I heard last night. We ought to, we ought to wait till we get that charge before we do a lot of work and spend time and and funds on that. So I I'd uh
I I I was thinking they had given that charge.
No, they didn't.
They have to write something.
That that charge is in progress. That that'll be coming.
Okay.
Did you hear this? Do you, did you hear it that way, Greg?
I heard a lot of conversation that they're going to send us a document. They they've accepted and they own the fact that they're going to work on the licensing issue.
Yeah.
I suspect at some point they're going to throw that back at us, Bill, and just have us look at it in the context of the ordinance that we're working on to make sure the two of them mesh together. I mean, that would be a wise move, but based on what they're doing. But a lot of the conversation from, again, from what I heard, is they're going to be sending something back to us saying look at registered caregivers in the context of a home occupation and come up with something to appropriately regulate these individuals within the residential zones.
Right.
Under the uh under the auspices of a home occupation. And just for the record, just just to put it out there, I think everybody knows where I'm coming from, uh because I've been attending these for a while. Again, I I think we're going to have to have some serious conversations about the definition. I'm not against marijuana. I have severe issues with what could potentially happen at this point in time in a residential zone, which gets to what Betsy was saying about setbacks and stuff. Thirty acres and one acre, there's a huge difference between the two of them. And so we do have to have those those conversations. So I'm just that that's what I, that's what I heard.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with everything you're saying, Greg. But the 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 thing is, if a registered caregiver uh exists in a residential zone, you know, uh downtown or in my neighborhood or whatever. Um um, you know, they they can do that under state law, and they can. And we're we're talking about an overlay of a local ordinance, which which does what it can to to deal with their rights in in that in that area. So if there's setbacks, but you're on a quarter acre lot, you're gonna have a tough time doing that. And if the state law said you're, you can be a registered caregiver on that lot in South Berwick or any other town, tha- that's where we, that's what we have to deal with as a whole occupation. So on, if it happened to be in our zone, that's easy. Or a uh our three or four or whatever, our five. If it's, if they're down in, you know, a a residential one, there's no stopping that. So there's a different set of set set of issues in in different places.
Mm-hmm. That's right. Size limitation.
Ones that uh have a home occupation, then they have a whole list of um different things that can qualify into these that. And all we need to do is come up with that list. And um would be marijuana or a car garage, and then they put limits on it. So they can still have these businesses, but they can't be the same size that if you're in the industrial.
Right. And and um as usual, you know, things go along fine until, you know, one person steps over the line, and then, you know, we have to now make a huge regulation around this. But I'd also like to point out that we've had registered caregivers growing marijuana in the town for, I think, over twelve years now. And at some point, it peaked. I think we had almost thirty. I think we're at twenty-three now. Um and I don't think there's been other complaints about any other the entire time, except for a Gunquit Road. Now, it's not to say a Gunquit Road is not it's a good example of what could happen, and no one wants to have it happen. But I have people growing marijuana in a little hoop house down the street from me, and you don't smell it. You don't notice it, you don't see it.
Yeah. I think for the vast majority of this, it's going to be just as, no one's gonna care.
Uh and also, one other thing, having talked to somebody who's a registered caregiver, many people in our town who are registered in our town don't grow in our town.
Yeah.
They are registered and they rent space somewhere else that actually might be more appropriate, where there aren't, not only are there, maybe the regulations are different, but you know, it might be a commercial building in a commercial strip mall, or an industrial park, or a barn in the middle of nowhere. And, you know, none of them want to be hassled. So I know of five already that are registered in our town of twenty-three. And I'm sure there are others. So I, you know, I'd be curious to know how many actually grow in the town.
Yeah. Well, I say, I think my expectations, the vast majority are going to be nothing burgers, as I said.
I I think the licensing part is really important, so that we have some mechanism for the town to shut something down when they're not complying.
And but what, you know, uh I've heard uh uh credible reports of proposals that have not gone forward that would be, that would run afoul with this licensing thing because of the scale and the scale. And and that's, I think, what this is for, in my view. To 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 control.
They're all out there and they're not bothering anybody. They don't see that they're gonna be any problem for those people.
I think you're right.
Oh, my God, Manly, you and I agree. Another night where we agree. Incredible. Okay, let's note that in the minutes.
Yeah, well, yeah, note that in the minutes.
Hershey and Manly, okay.
Okay. All right, that's great. So this is this is going to be a juicy topic as as it plays out. Um uh I want to the, just note for uh we uh the time change the subject on the, we had the uh uh what a solar proposal off of Agamemnon's Road last May. Uh that that, the time's gone by, it's been over six months, and they were notified that the time's up and they they're um they're they're they have to suspend their application because the time's up and they don't that that's in accordance with the stuff we looked at a month or two ago. So.
What, what, what's happening with NBD over off of?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know.
I wonder if they ran into inland fishing wildlife issues, because we have, Amy, did you hear from them?
I haven't heard from them. Um I asked Joe actually yesterday. The only issue that I think we're waiting on is that agreement between them and the Butters.
Yeah.
Or the landowner.
No, no, they had to, we we passed with conditions, and the conditions were that we had to get their report from DEP, and we had to get their inland fish and wildlife whatever that is, report.
Yeah.
So don't, don't issue them a permit. My question is, if we've approved them, is there a limit to the time where they can pull a permit?
That's good. I don't know the answer to that question.
I I think there is usually. Usually you can pull a permit, you get a year to pull a permit, or once again, you're, you have to start again.
I've not pulled the permit.
Okay.
Right now, but I'll um talk to Joe, maybe David, you can help too. We can try to figure out, maybe send them a quick you know, update. I know they sent us a few things a month ago, but um we didn't do anything with it because it wasn't complete.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, keep us, I don't want it to drop off our radar, even though it shows up on our agenda every month. Yeah.
So I made yesterday and today, we've been going back and forth with David. Uh Joe and I tried to make sure that going into the new year, we were up to speed with whatever projects we had out there. And so right right, as of right now, it's NBD solar. Uh wait, literally waiting, we'll figure that out in the next few days, waiting on, again, specifically, and then Amy's lane, and that's it.
Right. Yeah, it's interesting.
And let me say, Amy Eggyar, how great it's been to have you doing um all the organizing in the department. I think it's really gotten so much better. And it's great to see everything online and have accessibility to it and, you know, and everybody gets to see it now. Thank you.
I don't know if anybody saw it, but I had asked that we come up with some type of letter of appreciation for Bill and our other members that are leaving. I've asked for it a number of times, and a lot of people don't think it's important, but I think it's very important. How many years you've been on the board, Bill?
Uh thirteen or fourteen.
Wow, that that deserves like a watch or something.
No, that's not true.
Have a draft in your own letter?
That's good. Yeah, really.
I I just, I have two things, if 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 just for a conversation. Has there been any talk on the solar moratorium that went into?
I don't, I thought of that the other day, Greg. I I was about to weigh in on that. Um my partner works for a climate change organization, and she sent me a link to a um it's a lunch and learn calling Finding the Right Places to Site Solar. It's by the Maine Conservation Voters. I don't know if they have an agenda or not, so I'm not endorsing or not, but if, I will send it out to you. It's unfortunately twelve to one this Friday. So I'll forward it. Um you can sign up for it. I believe it's free. I'm sure it's free. Um and that might be a place to start. Also, John Branigan, uh who's one of our South Berwick Bulletin moderators and a nice guy, um has offered to come speak to us. Uh he worked for Revision Solar. He's in the industry. I think he works for Distributor. I'm also not sure if he, I don't think he would have an agenda. He's a pretty fair guy, and I think would give us um some good information. So we have some I found a few little resources, but um I think we could also ask David and the MMA, maybe, if they have um anything that really digs into the kind of town and community we are and how to think about um how this works and what the trade-offs are.
I can get to answer my question, and it happens time after time. It's to me, especially with someone like Bill, I tell you, when I go into a doctor's office, I look on the wall and um I try to doctor's office, I look on the wall and, um, I try to see, well, is this guy know what he's gonna, gonna operate my heart? But, uh, and Bill's business is, is doing exactly what he's been doing us for free. And I think it'd be nice to have that letter of recognition that's frameable. Uh, you've done it all these years. You haven't got paid a nickel. I think the least thing that both of yous, uh, should deserve is a, is a letter of, uh, thank you from the town. I don't know if it should come from the, the selectmen or if it should come from the, uh, from us, or I just wanna see it get done.
I'll talk to Jen.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Manly. It's not necessary, but I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Not necessary, just like when someone helps you and you say thank you, um, it's not necessary, but I tell you, to me, when I do something to somebody and they never say thank you, I never say nothing. But it bothers me that they can't at least say thank you.
Good. Yeah.
Something I want to, um, Hershey, just so the solar, um, farm moratorium is, it is in effect, in effect.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So as of right now, you know, nobody can bring.
It's been in effect since, I think, June. And I, I, I thought it, last night we were talking to the town council. I didn't raise it because it was off point, but I, I, I'm not sure what their expectations are on that. They want to get that back to us or what's going on? Yeah.
Well, I, I, I don't want this to turn into what happens with marijuana where nobody, you know, everybody's exhausted and doesn't want to deal with it. And then we get to this last minute-ish, not that it was so last minute, but you know, we. It runs out or something and we have to act, so.
If there's not a heavy caseload for a month or two, you can maybe, uh, you know, knock this off.
It'd be great to dig into. I'm gonna send this out, so keep an eye on it.
Uh, so I'll tell you what, let, let's have a consensus tonight on the record, uh, that we, we asked the question and, and we put on, on our agenda for next time to move it along. That way it's an official action.
Did, did the moratorium that they passed, um, state anything in it? I can't remember the actual language. But I, I, I thought there, that the memorandum that the board sent to the council, I believe said it needed some addition, uh, the use itself needed some additional research and that they wanted to find standards. I don't know that, I guess they actually need to formally send that to the board, but.
Well, well, why don't we, why, you prepared that memo, David. I suggest, why don't you drag that out and, and let's have a report on it next time and then.
You got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good. Um, you have something else, Amy?
Now, um, a couple of things to, to think about in the new year, you know, unfortunate out for you, Bill, but with Greg, um, coming on and eventually towards the end of January, uh, early February, we're gonna have to meet with our stormwater consultant, Kristy Robaska, to go over the numerous for um, permit, which doesn't actually go into effect until July of 2022. But there's a lot of, um, timeline things we have to be able to check off. And one of them is to have you sit in with the meeting with Kristy. So we would like to set up some point in the future. We're now to do it today or even next month to also have a training to go over all of our bylaws. Uh, whether it's with Phil or whether it's with the MMA consultants that they have, so that we are a hundred percent on, on board. And you, as a planning board member, will have to sign off on a piece of paper stating that you did go through the training.
Okay.
But that is a new item that, um, just came across today from Jen, that Tim, the new town manager, had found. So as we go forward with this, I'll probably put it on at the beginning of the, of the year as an agenda item ongoing. Just like, just, you know.
Yeah, good. While we're on bylaws, uh, we, uh, uh, when I was contacted by Greg a couple of months ago with, with interest to join, and he had a question about whether the schedule was uh, 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 that, that he's the guy who, who suggested we might go to the second and fourth. He and I talked yesterday. Um, and, uh, if he's comfortable, I'll let him speak, but if we go back to a seven o'clock start rather than a six thirty start, he thinks that that's not gonna be a problem sticking with the first and the third. Um, so, uh, we, uh, will, as a bylaw matter, we'll, we'll probably, uh, want to. We went back, we went from seven o'clock to six thirty three or four years ago for a bunch of reasons. And his request would be that we go back to seven, allowing him time to wrap up his meetings that are on the first and third and get to, uh, get to the planning board meetings on time.
I don't have any problem with that.
That, that'd be a very, very simple fix and, uh, and, and it would accommodate him without much of a yank on everybody else. So.
Yeah, I appreciate any consideration on that. I'm certainly not looking to upset the apple cart here. And when I sat down and thought about and had the discussion with you, I say, if we can, if the board is amenable and just moving it to seven o'clock, it's a pretty good chance to be able to make every one of them. So. Really close.
Is this, this is something, um, and where, where we need to start moving forward to is in person. Um, I'm getting people asking about that, so I just wanted to throw that out there that, you know. We got one more to go for the year and then January starts up and, um, the town council has made a comment there in person. So it's time for the planning board to be in person.
Um, who, so who, who exactly is asking that or telling us that?
Generalized. Nope, it's generalized. Jen had asked about it. A couple of, uh, citizens have asked about it. The fact that we made the in-person, um, uh, new memo that you guys created and approved states that we would be in person.
It's the state law, isn't it?
It is a state law. Yeah. Right now state that as a member of a, of a municipal board, um, you are required to be in person. We would made up our in-person, um, whatever that was, that letter stating that, you know, there could be some certain issues, like, like Bill was very clear to say that he would not be in person and we completely understood that and respected that.
This is not my issue anymore.
His issue anymore.
So, so Amy, I guess, I guess one question is, um, we're all acting as if the pandemic is over.
Yeah.
It is not. I just met with the top point person for the Department of Public Health of New Hampshire. He told me it's actually worse than it was a year ago today.
Yeah.
Their hospitals are overflowing. People are dying. It's only gonna get worse.
Yep.
And I don't, I'm not coming anywhere unless there's a mask protocol and a vaccination, a vaccination mandate.
Yeah. The, the, the policy that we put together in July, and I was very clear on that. Uh, and I, I had discussions with the town council. I had discussions with the town attorney on it. And everybody backed it. And it, it didn't say me. It said people with concerns about uh, safety of the protocol regarding the pandemic had the ability to choose to be remote. And I'm, I'm out of it. I'll stay out of it, but it, it wasn't, uh, and I agree with Hershey. I think at this point in time, back in May, June, think the sky was blue. Well, the sky didn't stay blue. Sky got dirty again. And, uh, I, I, I don't believe there's a requirement of the town or the state to require in person, but I'm out of it. And I, if I was staying on, I would fight this tooth and nail. Cause I don't know, I don't know who this understanding is. Who, who, who's, where's the vote of the town council directing us to go back in person? Where's the vote of, where's the town manager's position on that? I think we all would have the ability to react against that, perhaps negatively.
I, I'm sorry, Amy, no one's, no one's mad at you about this.
I don't, I, 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 my, what I was asking Amy is, who would I contact? Because I'm, I will happily write a letter to whoever is requesting this and tell them that I'm resigning if I have to come in person. And that is, and, and that's okay with me. I feel fine. But that's obviously a problem because we're low on numbers. So I, I, I mean, it's fine if that's what they want to require. I just need to know who I send my resignation letter to.
Get in the town council.
Okay.
Well, it's interesting for some statistical stuff. Our vaccination center, last night we handed out 750 shots yesterday. And it's, uh, we are getting slammed hard. And now the CDC wants us to open up a monoclonal antibody treatment center because there's no capacity in the hospitals to do that. So we'll be doing that soon. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's far from over and.
This is, this is, uh, I, I'm astonished that we even have discussion.
It, you know, everybody got, well, like you said, Bill, you know, things opened up. People got, you know, used to, okay, it's over and now we have to retrench. And it's, it's difficult to go back. It's difficult to sort of, you know.
The data's not there.
Well, if it does have to go to in person, if, I'll need, need some travel time. So I can't guarantee I'll be here seven o'clock all the time. It'd probably be closer to seven fifteen.
Well, I'm the.
I'll have to make it work somehow, you know.
On the bright side, I, I pulled up the bylaws, uh, while we were chatting. And, uh, we are some, the bylaws, and that was one of the things that I brought up before. They specifically say first and third Wednesday of each month and regular meetings start at seven PM. So. We don't, we don't have to do anything like that. But, um, with that, um, and that's what, why I brought the matter up, that if, if the bylaws are being looked at, I think that the board should have some flexibility built in there. I mean, if, if the, if the town gets so slow that uh, business-wise, planning board-wise, that the board only wants to meet once a month, or they need to suddenly switch it up to Thursdays or something like that. I think the board should be able to do that, as, as long as the board is providing public, uh, uh, public notice of meetings and new times or anything like that. So I, I think that the, the specific times and dates listed in an ordinance or, you know, or you put it a little as amended by the board or something like that.
I think going back to the, going back to that, that, that document that we adopted back in July or August, whatever it was. Um, we, that was, that was very deliberate, that very deliberately worded. And I think it absolutely provides the flexibility for us to choose to be in person or not be in person, ease on concerns about the pandemic. And, um.
If that's the case, just send something to us to let us know.
But we, you have that, you have that. That, that, that document's there. We adopted it in, in August.
I, I, I think what, I think what Amy is saying, oh, I think what Amy is saying is every one of us should just send our concerns and say, this is how we're gonna do it. If I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah, you have an, like, we knew, I, I'm not pointing at you, Bill, but we knew that you were very clear that you were not going to come in, that you would resign. And then Betsy just mentioned it. So to send that and let them know this is where I, I stand, I will not be in because of the pandemic. And that's, I should think that's a hundred percent acceptable.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll find the memo and, and when we get off, and I'll make sure you each have it so you can reference that if you want to.
Is, is there a, is there a consensus with the board?
I, I, I know that, um, all that just wanna come on to getting until was happening. How we've got to resolve, so I the big issue, we need to get a full board and a, a full, uh, people to back.
Hey, Pat Robinson, I think you're, you're, can you mute yourself, please?
Is it JoJo? JoJo?
Yeah, I was, I will tomorrow make sure I speak with Jen and Joe and I'm gonna actually take it off my plate and make them make the decisions instead of having them ask me to ask guys, what, where, where are you? You coming or you're not coming? Cause every week I have to ask. And so we gotta stop that. It's either you're here or you're not. So, um, once we get that information, then I will just make sure it's taken care of this week.
Sorry, Amy.
Thanks, Amy. Just before the meeting, I got an email that, that my daughter's class had a positive case.
Yeah, it's all over.
Uh, my, yeah, one of my daughters had close contact.
Yeah.
Oh, Amy.
Had it seventeen days ago. I tested positive.
Yeah.
Oh, was it awful?
No, no, I'm fully vaccinated. It was, I, I was, I mean, a little bit, but I mean.
Breakthrough cases all over the place. So.
Yeah.
I know someone who was vaccinated that went to the hospital three times in five days.
We had a guy, we had a guy who worked, we have a vaccination policy. Everybody can't come to the office unless they've proven, not just said, but they show us the vaccination card. That, that works. Uh, this guy had COVID in March, got vaccinated, I don't know, in the spring. And then I got a breakthrough case last week. So it, it just, it's still out there.
Yeah.
He was real, he was really sick last week, terribly sick.
Yeah, my, my wife's best friend and her husband had their shots and they both got it. And luckily she had just had a kidney transplant about six months prior. So, but yeah, I mean, they had the boosters, the whole bit.
Anyway, okay. I'm glad we, uh, had that discussion. It's gonna be nice.
Amy, if possible, I'll, I'll attend remotely also.
All right, we're not gonna pay you to get here.
In solidarity.
Yeah.
Okay, um, well, there we go. Uh, are there any other member comments that have not been, uh, confronted already? Okay. Well, great. So again, I just, uh, we, our regular meeting is, uh, the fourteenth, I guess, and, uh, um, uh, we'll have that and, uh, wanna uh, welcome and thank Greg for coming on. And, uh, I didn't have, I didn't have a opportunity to thank, um, Jeff Minahan in abstention, but he was gonna try to hang on and then we found out family identified the, the, the code where he could, can't stay on. So that was, that was good to do.
Always been that way in all of them.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's funny, in some towns they don't. They, 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 they do allow a, a, a council or a selectman. That's okay. We don't, so.
One family can, uh, can control all the boards if they don't, uh, have some limit, you know.
Yeah, well, yeah, anyway, that's good. Okay. Um, okay, then, uh, and I, uh, we, we, we have five on the board now. In a month we'll have four. And I think some people had talked about their cultivating another member or two, and I urge you to do that. Uh, cause, uh, uh, four is, four is a little bit dangerous.
Yeah, I believe we'll have a, a full board.
Great. Great. That's, that's gotta, that's got the applications into the council. So, yeah, great. Okay. Well, thanks a lot and, uh, talk to you later.
Thanks. Good night, everybody.
We adjourn.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Wait, wait, just get this step. Do we have a?
Oh, my God. I hate, why do we have to use Roberts rules? What kind of feminists are you?
I'll assume that those vote, uh, uh, vote in the affirmative. Okay. But and Manly, Manly, uh, Manly.
I'll second.
All right, sit, sit by Hershey.
Here we go. Okay.